I will. Why don't you two share this one and John and I'll share.
I'm gonna start rifling through the papers, so I might as well just take it out.
Everybody ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Pete Barubi. I'm the chairperson of the Milis Finance Committee. Tonight is the 27th of April. We will start our meeting, the annual pre-town meeting, and prep for Monday's annual town meeting. And so we'll start off with, to my left, introductions, and then we'll get started right into the agenda.
Jim Borkman.
Sarah Reyes.
Peter Underhill.
John Stedman.
Jody Garson.
Kathy McGinnis.
John Lor.
Okay. And I'm also gonna afford the Select Board, since they have a quorum here tonight, to open their meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Barubi. And I'd like to declare the Select Board meeting open. We have myself, Pete Germain, and Aaron Underhill, our vice chair.
They might have to go upstairs to the mic.
Sorry about that. Pete Germain, Chair of the Select Board. We have with us tonight Aaron Underhill, our vice chair, and I believe Craig Schultz may be attending shortly.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna get right into it. So, pre-town meeting is essentially a rehearsal of town meeting, or essentially for us. But we will certainly entertain any questions or comments from the audience. I do not intend to open up any official discussion or make motions on anything that we've already covered. We do have two motions that have yet to be voted on, so we'll likely get to one of those. And I have a feeling another one, number 10, will either get tabled, or dismissed, or recommended at town meeting. So that said, let's get started with Article 1.
I think Jim Borkman has that.
Jim?
No.
You don't have to go through, certainly don't need to read the motion. Just give us a synopsis, please. You can hit any highlights, or really synopsize it for the general public. And then if any of the board, excuse me, committee members have any comments that they'd like to make in terms of how, any inputs to your discussion, then that would be the time to do that.
Okay. So, this is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $3,464.51 to pay for the following unpaid bills incurred by the town department's previous fiscal years, or take other action. Summarize. So there's...
Highlights.
Yeah. W. Mason bills, as well as bizcom and Comcast.
Okay, this is a standard article, happens every year. It's really because for bills received after fiscal year '21 closed, they would be received, and the town has so much time to process them. And of course, if they come in after June 30th, when their fiscal year closes, this would be our opportunity to use FY '21 dollars to pay those. So, not, pretty standard, and usually pretty straightforward. Okay? Article 2.
Mr. Chek.
Mr. Underhill.
For Article 2, these transfers are typically made at spring annual town meeting to the various budget divisions in the current fiscal year to make sure that the overall FY '22 balances on June 30th, 2022. The main drivers of the transfers this year are to cover unanticipated public safety vacancies caused by police officers, firefighters, being out on, being out due to an injury on duty with overtime to cover shifts, as well as unexpected increase in general insurance, property, casualty, and liability costs.
Okay. And I'll just make a comment that I believe we are going to take a motion on this one tonight. This is one that we deferred last week. The dollars and cents have since been refined to the point that they're finalized. So, you know, lacking any comments or questions, I would ask that you make a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Underhill.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the following accounts, the sums of money listed below to fund additional wages and expenses, to the accounts listed below, which were not sufficiently funded under Article 3, operating budget of the May 1st, 2021 annual town meeting. Transfer from Town General Government, Health and Human Services, $14,484.46. Culture and Recreation, $20,000. Public Works, $7,398.01. Employee Benefits, $6,372.09. For a total of $150,092.71. With the transfer to, the general insurance, for $31,738.18. And public safety, $118,354.53. For the total of $150,092.71.
I'd like to amend that motion.
Please do.
I'd like to move to recommend approval of Article 2 in the form that it was just described.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the committee vote to approve the motion as read and the amounts that are read. Discussion. And I'll just start us off by saying, this is really a function of keeping the, it's a balanced budget motion from last year. Excuse me, from this year, this current fiscal year. So, at the, at this time last year, the amounts that were in the lines up top and the transfer from, those were estimates at the time. And the transfer to line, those lines came up a little bit short for their estimates. But ultimately, this does not result in any more money being appropriated for the current year's budget. It just allows, gives the town the authority to transfer money between lines. So, if anybody was wondering, wanted a little bit more explanation of that. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGinnis.
Could anybody give me or us the amount of what was in the budget for public safety for overtime purposes? Is there a line item for overtime? For the police and fire? But there is. Just wondering, it kind of is the, this money that if they had calculated, I know it's injuries and everything like that, but we seem to be adding to the overtime and then requesting more at this, at town meetings. And I would hope people, and it's happened a few times, so maybe, I know the chiefs are working on it, so I'd like to see it a lower number next year. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? Ms. Harden. If you could come to the mic.
I will.
I always wanted to say that to you, because you're good about making sure that we do it.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk, 56 Walnut Street. I'm just trying to clarify for what's happening here. The $118,000, et cetera, to the line item of public safety? Is it, public safety includes, like, six different departments? Is it all going to one of those departments? Or is it sort of divided up among them all?
Ms. Johnston, would you be able to give us a little bit more insight? Off the top of your head?
So as was mentioned, Carol Johnston, Finance Director. As was mentioned earlier, we have, we did set up a reserve fund, if you remember, fund in the fall, that we didn't, for the 111Fs, that we did not fund. So, currently, we have one full-time firefighter on worker comp, and we also have a police officer on worker comp. In the state of Massachusetts, you have to pay 100% of their base pay when they're out on 111F, and it comes out of your operating budget. Because we don't have the funds, we don't have the fund funded. So in this case, there is overtime for the police department and the fire department. They have to pay for the people that do the shift coverage in those lines, but they still have to pay that officer that's out. So that's where, that's what's driving this.
If we didn't have that, it would be money that could be used for something else.
We, I think, in the fall, when I came before everybody to ask for that fund to be set up for the 111F, on average, we spent $95,000 a year on related worker comp. So, it has to come one way or the other. And so hopefully, we'll be able to fund it in the fall. And then for '23, it will hit that fund. But every year, we would have to fund it. Because, as I said, we're self-funded, and it has to be paid.
So, as I understand it, whether we funded, whether we fund the 111F fund or not, it still pays, we still pay out of the operating budget, workers' comp. Now, if you allocated it or appropriated it one year from available resources, you would fund it, and it wouldn't come from the operating budget. But you still would have to cover those shifts using overtime if you had a firefighter or policeman, police person out on workers' comp.
Right. So you'd see the reduction in the base pay?
Right.
But you would see the increase in the overtime? Because that's how the person gets paid.
Okay. All right. Okay. Not hearing any more questions or comments. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, eight to zero. Dieter, if you would just affirm that you have that?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay. Article 3 is the operating budget. The operating budget is really the main article for the annual town meeting. And it appropriates nearly all of the funds that operate the town, whether that be for schools, for DPW, for police, fire, governance, executive office. And you can see the amount here, $39,781,035. We will go through this in depth at town meeting. The Finance Committee has held meetings, when do we start? Maybe mid-January? The town started putting their budgets together late last year, early this calendar year. And the Finance Committee has had nearly every department in here to make a budget presentation. They have entertained our questions, our comments, sometimes our suggestions for changes, what have you. And that has resulted in the Finance Committee voting to approve the budget. And again, we'll go into more detail with each of the departments and the lines as the town moderator will more or less guide that discussion for each line. But you can see, it's quite a bit of money, and it should generate discussion amongst town hall. I hope that it does, because I think that the budget is defendable. There are always trade-offs that have to happen. It is, you know, we think, I'm confident that the Finance Committee has done its role to review, scrutinize, and discern what are valid requirements and what are not. In some cases, we've asked departments to go back and relook things with the goal of reducing the budget. And perhaps that could be done, and should be done more. But, you know, it takes a lot of resources to operate a town, to operate schools that we have, provide the services that the town does. So again, I expect that we'll have some good discussion on the operating budget. And unless there's any questions, we'll move on to Article 4. Any comments or questions on the operating budget? Okay. Article number 4.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Reyes.
This article will fund the estimated first-year cost items contained in the collective bargaining agreements in the amount of $115,000 for the following: Town of Milis and SEIU Local 888, Professional Firefighters of Milis Local 4704, and AFSCME Council 93 Local 3901.
Okay. And the Finance Committee recommended approval of the article at the time.
Yes.
Okay. Comments, questions? Okay. Article number 5.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gordon.
Article 5 is to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the coming fiscal year.
Okay. Any comments, questions? I'll just, again, this is really just the very, very much the basics for those that aren't familiar with why the Sewer Enterprise Fund, the Water Enterprise Fund, or the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. The very basic is that the funds generated, those systems are operated based on fees. So, user fees, you could, you could, definitely the sewer and the water fund, which we'll discuss, those, excuse me, the sewer and the water fund are generated through fees. There's a bit of a different formula for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Those are different because they collect, the town collects fees based on usage and meterage and estimation, whereas the operating budget is done, is, its revenue is generated from taxes. And that's why they're, that's one of the biggest differences between them. Any questions on the Sewer Enterprise Fund? All right, please keep going.
All right. Mr. Chair. Article 6 is to fund the Water Enterprise Fund. And again, that's, it is based on user fees, based on metered or estimated usage.
Okay. Article 7.
So Article 7 is to fund the Stormwater Fund, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. And that is based on assessed square footage of impervious area on each property in Milis. So it's funded a little bit differently than the other two enterprise funds.
Okay. Article 8. Mr. Stedman.
Article 8 is a consent article that appears in the meeting every year. There are four individual pieces to this. Number 1, approves the salary plan for non-union employees for fiscal year 2023. Number 2, is an administrative detail required to be approved annually by the, by law for the Board of Health. Article number 3, the town has several revolving funds as listed in the warrant. These funds receive fees and other revenue from various sources, and sometimes they receive gifts. This article allows them to use up to the limits in this warrant without approval from the Select Board or other administrative authority. Item 4, Milis adopted the Community Preservation Act at the Spring Town Meeting in 2007. It receives revenue from the county, from fees at the recorder of Ds, and a less than 1% adder onto the property tax. It's, in simple terms. For fiscal year 2022, the fund received $248,578.15, of which $89,913 came from the state. This statute requires that there be the levy on the tax bill. What this warrant does is it allocates the money received into the various funds within the Community Preservation Fund. The Finance Committee recommended approval of this article.
Okay, super. Thank you. Article 9? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Harden.
I just had a quick question about the revolving fund for the Recreation Department. I believe it was 200,000 last year. Why is it being deleted?
It is being more or less dissolved at the request of the Recreation Department and the Recreation Committee, or Commission. They requested that that be absorbed into the operating budget of the town. So the funds that are there will come into the general fund, and please, Carol, if I'm wrong, correct me, but they'll either be expended, and then at the end of this year, and whatever's left over will come into the budget. And then the general fund will fund the Recreation Department. They will still generate revenue, but their revenue won't go into the revolving fund. It'll come in as, into the general fund for future year's budgets.
Okay. Thank you.
Any corrections? None heard. Hope, maybe, good, a clarification.
Hi. So you are correct that the money going into those revolving funds can be spent by the revolving funds without coming forward for appropriation. However, the dollar limits that are associated with that is not what their budget is. It just means if they took in sufficient fees, and they had expenses that went to that dollar limit, then they could spend up to that dollar limit. But it has to be offset by the fees coming in. They can't go into a deficit.
Okay. Thank you. So the numbers, the numbers that are in the revolving fund are essentially limits, not funding thresholds.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Article 10? Article 9? 9. Sorry, Mr. Lor.
Mr. Chair. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $21,035.16 from the Community Preservation Open Space Recreation Reserve Fund for soundproofing for the pickleball tennis courts.
Okay. We're not going to take any motions, but that particular...
That was a good dry run.
Yep. It was definitely a good dry run.
On the first take.
Right. So, if you would describe the reason and the background on this, just real briefly.
Of course. The recreational department has requested, with a buddy neighbor, to reduce the noise of the pickleball game. And I include tennis, because the tennis courts are there as well. And a sound barrier would be placed on the northeast fence of the pickleball courts area.
Okay. So this has been a problem for a few years, anyway, since the pickleball courts have come up and were constructed. And they definitely are in use. Last year, the Select Board, working with Ms. Fogarty and others, took steps to limit usage after hours, just to cut down on the noise, or at least the duration of the noise. But it's still a noisy area. And the residents have, you know, joined together and have provided feedback and written form to the Select Board and to Ms. Fogarty. And certainly, we want to be sensitive to their needs, or to their, you know, their opinions on the issue. And so that's what, that's what's proposed here. Okay. Article number 10. Mr. Stedman.
Yes. This article is before the Community Preservation Fund, which is why there are no dollars. They will be tomorrow night. But the request is for them to fund a inventory and management plan, a strategic plan, if you will, for numerous town-owned parcels, something that has not been done. If approved by the CPC, they will use funds that have been raised through the CPC. It will not affect the tax bill. We'll see how that turns out tomorrow night. And the Finance Committee will be making a recommendation prior to town meeting. Any questions?
Okay. Keep going. Number 11.
That's me, too. The trails at Oak Grove are, well, Oak Grove is a real asset to the town. And it's got perimeter trails around it that are a combination of woods and fields. They're impassable. It's a real problem. And this will go toward funding improvements to those trails so that they can be used by the cross-country team, the public, and anybody else. And also up to the standard that emergency vehicles can access the park if necessary. Again, this is, this will be funded through the CPC and will not have any impact on taxes or the operating budget. Any questions?
Okay. Ms. Reyes. Article 12.
This article is concerning the FY '23 recertification process. Every five years, Massachusetts cities and towns are required to go through a recertification audit by the Massachusetts Department of Revenues Bureau of a local assessment for real and personal property, which takes place over the course of two fiscal years. This audit started last fiscal years, and this will be funding the second half of the audit in the amount of $17,800.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Article 13 is basically an annual, actually probably twice a year. It's an article which appropriates funding for various capital purchases that the various departments have requested. The requests are essentially prioritized by the Capital Planning Committee, which is a committee of at least five reps, one each from the Select Board, the School Committee, this committee, the Finance Committee, and then a couple of at-large members as well, and then also represented by some town officials. And the requests, and in this cycle, we had, I think, 12 or maybe 15, somewhere in that neighborhood, 12 or 15 different requests. And the requests by the Capital Planning Committee are prioritized based on their criticality, benefit to the community, health and safety, ability to reduce operating cost, or generate, potentially generate revenue. There's a number of different factors that those requests are evaluated for. And they're broken down, broken down into, or racked and stacked, three different categories, you know, highest need, medium need, low need. And then that committee, the Capital Planning Committee, forwards its recommendation to this committee, the Finance Committee, and as well as, in addition to the Select Board. This year, based on the available free cash after a number of different budget decisions, including the operating budget this year, there was essentially five projects chosen for, or proposed for funding to be decided at town meeting by the voters. And they are, these five projects, a public safety radio console update, essentially to provide updated technology and capability for police and fire to communicate. An emergency management generator, which would provide for generator backup of the radio system. And then three other projects that would go, would be funded for the DPW and the Enterprises, Chevy Silverado with Plow. That would be cost shared between the DPW and the Enterprises. DPW and Enterprises as well for skid steer, which would primarily be used for snow removal, but that piece, particular piece of equipment would be used likely year-round. And again, by both the DPW and Enterprises. And then finally, a mobile message board, which would be used, again, for, these are standard, would be a standard board, a mobile board that could be put out for traffic hazards, or, you know, different announcements that, you can see them all over. Different towns have them. We do have one, the town does have one of these boards. It's in operation. They typically would lease or rent another one if they needed another one. But, and just because these five projects are on here doesn't mean that they're the top five priorities. For instance, the message board was the lowest priority, but it fell within the available resources. So it moved up the list and was able to get funded. So the Finance Committee recommends approval of these appropriations. Okay? Ms. McGinnis.
Article 14?
Yes, please.
If approved, this article will appropriate $500,000 to pay additional costs of making water treatment plant improvements at the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant to address excessive levels of PFAS identified in Wells 1 and 2, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, which amount shall be expended in addition to the $5.6 million previously appropriated for this project under Article 4 of the warrant at the Fall Annual Town Meeting. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 4. authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 4, Section 8, 4, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town. Therefore, all or any portion of the borrowing authorized by this vote may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The Select Board is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any state or federal aid that is or may become available for these purposes, and the total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any federal or state grants received on account of this project. Two-thirds majority is required, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Garzon.
I noticed in the motion that it references fall annual town meeting, but it does not give a date, so I would recommend that that be edited so that it is clear when the vote was taken.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Gazinski, Town Administrator, that is a point well-taken. However, this language came directly from bond counsel. We've been advised that we should stick with the exact language from bond counsel because they're the ones that actually approve it, although I do understand the concern, and I did express that myself, but it was confirmed that they are comfortable with that language, so.
Okay.
What, what does Town Council say?
Town Council didn't have a direct opinion on it. Usually, Town Council defers to bond counsel on any questions dealing with, with debt on articles.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Underhill.
Could we not just clarify that point in the discussion of the article after it's read?
We could.
I think that would be, that would be very appropriate, yes, to clarify the timeline on that.
Do we have a, do we have a date? Was that November 2021?
It was November 8.
Yeah, I believe it was November 8th.
Okay.
Twenty-one. And I would agree, that's probably the best way to handle it.
In the discussion?
In the explanation to, to clarify that, of the date of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Any other questions on Article 14?
I, I just want to, how, how is this, the money being divided from what accounts to pay for this? I, do usually, do they ever say what the source is for?
It's from borrowing.
They borrow.
But is it the enterprise funds that are borrowing, or the town?
It would be a combination of both. It would be the same way it was distributed.
Ms. Johnson. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Please come to a mic.
And that was my next question, Mr. Chair. How was it done the first time around, just for clarification?
I believe it was divided four ways.
Four ways? Okay.
The allocation would be done in the same method that was used for the $5.6 million of the original article.
Okay. So, general water, sewer, and stormwater.
Yeah. So, it was split four ways.
Okay. I have another question.
Before you go. Why?
I don't think that's a decision.
I don't, you know what? I don't.
Do you remember?
I take that back. I was thinking of the DPW building. This would all be the water, because it's only the water treatment plant.
Yeah. That makes sense. Yeah, I was like...
I'm sorry. I was thinking of the DPW building. It was the, but they would...
Well, I didn't know better, but your answer did it get me to say, whoa, that doesn't make sense.
It's the same allocation that we would have for the fall, which would be that we, it would all go to water, because it's only a water treatment.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Gazinski, and Mr., I think it's Mr. Duffy?
Yep.
You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clarify that 2.3 million of the, the total cost for this project has already been identified through the ARPA funds. In addition, the Select Board has been actively seeking additional funds and is working with the DPW and other town officials in seeking funds through Congressman Auchanclaw, through federal, additional federal grant funds, so those are being sought. So, we're hoping that any net resulting cost that needs, needs to be borne by the rate payers will be small, and we will continue to work on this to get this to as close to zero as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, Jim Duffy, Exchange Street Mills. In general, the what and why are, I don't find in many of these that are non-standard sort of articles, why, what, why is this 500,000 necessary? What's the explanation behind it? It would be helpful to know above and beyond the 5.6, for example, so.
Oh, actually, I might let Kathy take a swing at that.
To the best of my understanding in town, Mr. Gazinski can correct me, it was, the bids were higher than the consultant had, just in even the course of six or seven months, it, there was a shortfall, so. And when you bond a project, you have to have so much in your savings account in case you overspend, and because of this, we need to put a little more money into the savings account. We might not need this money. I've been, you know, we've been, we've been, it's been mentioned, so hopefully we won't, but it seems like the, for the DPW garage, there was a very sharp pencil, and the, the staff there contributed, and the town contributed and brought the price down, and I think they'll do a lot with their machinery that the town's buying for them to take care of this also.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Garzon.
I think it's worthy of note that in some previous projects, while we had the authorization to borrow a certain amount, we were able to turn funds back, but you have to have the authorization to borrow up to whatever you need for a project, almost regardless of where the funds eventually come from. So, that's what this does. It kind of tops up that authorization.
I think that's definitely worthy of note. I mean, if, if the, if the bid is, if the bid plus the contingency is, say, $6.1 million, the 5.6 plus this $500,000 authorization, and the 2.3 million from the state or whomever, the ARPA funds, when those show up, then the lending will, would be less, and if additional funding is received from state or federal resources through this request that Mr. Gazinski just spoke of, then the town wouldn't borrow the funds. It just has the authority to do so. So, it's important to know that. There's that, that is, we don't know how much, we know what the maximum amount we will borrow, 6.1, but we don't know the actual amount, and, and hopefully, we're fortunate enough to receive this, the aid that is, looks like it's promising. I'll, I'll leave it at that. So, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Article 15.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Garzon.
If this article passes, it will fund engineering and surveying services for the design of adding sidewalks on the west side of Plain Street, and would provide funds for the maintenance of roads throughout the town in the amount of $160,000.
West side of Plain Street is the southbound side?
I'm not good with east and west.
This is the school side.
Okay. That would be the southbound side. Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. 16 would be...
Chair.
Ms. McGinnis.
A simple majority will approve the town to vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for tree removal and maintenance. And the continued removal of dangerous trees throughout town.
Tree Warden has requested that budget, and the town has done, as he would say, and I think most of us would agree, the town's done an excellent job of providing the resources to maintain trees, which, as he has described over the years, have come under various threats from invasive species and you name it.
One of Pete.
You name it. He's, he's, he's on top of it, and we keep providing him the resources to do it, and hopefully, you know, we won't have to do that as much in the, in the years to come. Okay. Not, 16, 17, sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Reyes.
Article 17 is new computer leases. This article is authorizing the town to enter into a new three-year lease for iPads for the Millis kindergarten and first grade students for the first year, cost of $23,300, and this is included in Article III in FY23 operating budget. After the third year, the computers and iPads will be available for purchase for $1.
Comments, questions?
Finance Committee voted to unanimously approve this motion.
Okay. Thank you. 18.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Reyes.
Article 18 is lease to purchase two police cruisers. This article is authorizing the town to enter into a three-year lease to purchase agreement for two new replacement police cruisers in the amount of $104,000. First year cost of the lease is $34,667 and is included in Article III FY23 operating budget.
So, it's a very subtle distinction that I think we all need to be aware of, and that is that these particular articles are really just the authorization to, a lease is, is treated as a lending in, in public finance, and so there's a requirement to have that authority to, anytime we, we were to borrow, there has to be a separate authorization to do that. So, the money, even though there are, we know what the requirement and what the upper limit would be of the lease, the money is act, the actual appropriation is within the operating budget, which is a bit of a change from previous years, but it's one that, since these are recurring costs, where every year, we keep having leases and for computers and for vehicles, that several entities in the town, including the Capital Planning Committee, the Select Board, Finance Committee, felt that that should be included in the operating costs of these particular departments for the school and the, and the police. Okay. Mr. Underhill.
Article 19. All of the changes in this article were included in the Charter Review Committee's recommendations for a charter change. This version is only a general bylaw and does not contain some of the recommended changes from the Charter Review Committee, since these changes, in order to have legal effect, would have required a charter change. The article proposes these changes to the bylaw instead of the town charter because it is easier to change in the future with a simple majority vote at town meeting as the needs of the town change down the road. The article also proposes a formal process for an acting town administrator in the event of an absence of the town administrator for under 20 days, and an interim town administrator in the event of the resignation or termination of the current town administrator. These changes will allow greater flexibility and service to the people of Millis by the town administrator's office.
Okay. Ms. Harden.
I just have a question about the point, what the point is of putting this into our general laws. The town has hundreds of employees, and we're choosing to put the job description of one person into our general laws. Why, why is that necessary? It's that, they have, it's never been there before. What's different now?
Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this has been covered a few times before in some prior discussions, but I will add that the town administrator is the chief administrative officer of the town. It's quite common in towns across the Commonwealth to have some guiding document within the town's formal documents, whether that be the charter or bylaws of the community that outlines the powers and duties of that position, because it does appoint most of the employees of the town with the ratification of the Select Board. So, this does provide, I think, broader guidance and guidelines beyond the current limited language in the town charter. And again, I think Town Council has spoken to this at a prior meeting, and it is, it is something in a, in a bylaw much easier to change, so I think that's answered some of the questions and concerns that have come up at the, at some of the prior discussions on this.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Underhill.
Mr. Chair, I would also like to say that under previous discussions, that the town administrator position is only defined broadly in the town warrant, and this would give more specificity to the position, but none of these changes changed the base fact that the town administrator does answer to the Select Board. The core of that remains the same.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Okay. None heard. Mr. Underhill, number 20.
All right. Article 20. This article is not in any way a reflection on the current, current town clerk. What this article ensures is that when Millis needs a new town clerk, there can be a license and experience requirements for the position. An elected town clerk position cannot require licensing or experience on the part of the candidates, so we have no guarantee that Millis will enjoy the current services we have by a qualified and experienced town clerk. If this position is made, appointed rather than elected, it will become another department under the town administrator, like the DPW, Police Department, or Fire Department.
Comments, questions? Ms. Harden.
I just want to make a comment on the previous comment, that it's no reflection on me. However, it will take effect, if it's passed, at the end of my current term, which means that I would not be able to run again. So, it is, it is a reflection on the current person, actually. You're, you're basically saying you're going to fire me. Just, just to clarify how it's written, it doesn't say at the end of when I choose to retire.
Okay. That's a good point. Thank you.
There's nothing to say that you might not be considered for, for appointment.
Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, Jim Duffy. Could anyone elaborate on the commonality of the town clerks being elected as opposed to appointed?
Mr. Gazinski. You have the most experience in terms of what other towns. I think that's what the question is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It has, you know, originally, not to have a history lesson, but in the 17 and 1800s, these positions were all elected. Starting in the mid-1900s, a lot of these positions of town clerk within different communities have been switching to appointed, and as towns progress and become more professionalized, that, that is the change that's occurring. So, it's, it's becoming quite common, and it's really, it's, in my view, a matter of time, whether the town chooses to do it now or choose to delay it a period of time, that's certainly up to the, to the people of the community, but it is something that is the trend in the Commonwealth, and I believe within the next 15 to 20 years, virtually all towns will have appointed town clerks.
While you're there, could you, I have a question. Could you speak to the licensing and professional requirements that are being contemplated for that position?
I can't go into any details on that. I know that there are, with any department head-level position, there'll be certain backgrounds, certain experiences that, that we'd be looking for, for the position, and I think the concern being is that as we move to the future and perhaps new town clerks get, get elected, they will not have the, the background and the knowledge necessary for such an important position. I think most people maybe underestimate how important the position of town clerk is as far as meeting the regulatory guidelines and requirements of the Commonwealth, and that, that is the concern, really, moving forward, to make sure that you have a professional person that's accountable on a day-to-day basis to the operation and not just once every three years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stedman.
I have a question for clarification. If this passes at the town meeting, will it then appear on a ballot, or does it take effect? Because my recollection was this would really put it on the next year's ballot.
Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are correct. It would appear on next year's ballot if the town meeting were to approve this. So, nothing would actually change prior to a year from now. At the earliest. Make sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We have another question.
We have two more questions, three more questions. Sir.
Kim Taiwan, Kada Jav. Can you tell me as to qualification of our current town clerk as far as certification and qualification you, you guys mentioned? Is she up to date?
I'm going to decline to answer that. I don't think it's necessarily germane or relevant, based on what I heard Mr. Underhill say. It's not a reflection of our current, I don't know her qualifications. I heard Mr. Gazinski say the town can't require qualifications of a elected official. I don't think it's relevant, so I decline to answer it. Okay. Okay. Thank you, though. Ms. Rosenfeld. Okay. Thank you, though. Ms. Rosenfeld?
Ellen Rosenfeld, Talbot Evergreen Terrace. I know Mr. Gazinski said that it's a trend, but in the neighboring towns, I could probably Google it, but I'm assuming we know, in the neighboring towns, Similas situated, Norfolk probably the most, but Medfield, Medway, Sherbin, Dover, do you know how they do it, Mr. Gazinski? Oh, you don't? Okay.
We can look it up, though, and we can have it prepared for Monday. Ms. Harden?
I'm sure this conversation will be continued on Monday, but I just wanted to respond to the, well, give you just a little bit of history about Milis. Town clerks, well, town clerks statewide were elected, and then in the seventies, they started becoming full-time because there were a lot more things that the town clerk had to do. At that time, the town clerk in Milis was George Ford, and he was a social studies teacher at the Clyde Brown School. He did not want a full-time job, so he made the assistant town clerk the full-time position. And the town of Milis is the only town in the Commonwealth that does not have a full-time town clerk when the office is open full-time. All, all across the state, the, it's, the surveys have been done, salary surveys, whatever, and Milis is always, has a little asterisk next to its name because we're so out of whack with everyone else. So this, the staffing in the office is kind of upside down. The department head can't be there all the time, and the other staff is. Anyway, so that's one of the things that I've been trying to get corrected. The other comment that I wanted to make is about the word trend. It is true that every couple of years, some towns put an article on their warrant to make their elected town clerk appointed, and some of the towns pass it and some don't. But the vast majority of towns are still elected town clerks, paid full-time, and they don't put it on their warrant because they think it's working fine. So it's, I, I think the word trend is kind of misleading. Makes it sound like everyone's going that way, but they're, they're not. The, the larger towns and cities are more apt to be appointed, like the ones that have mayors like Franklin and Boston and, you know, Framingham, the big, the bigger towns, but the ones that are more our size, are still mainly elected full-time town clerks.
Thank you. Any more comments? Mr. Duffy? Mr. Duffy?
The devil's in the details, and I'll see the details here in terms of who appoints, who gets, who has, is there approval of the appointment, et cetera? That, that actually is spelled out in one of the previous articles. The, there is, there are bylaws that say who's appointed, who's rat, you know, who ratifies appointments, so. This would fall under?
Yep. Yes, sir.
The department head structure.
Ms. Harden, I'll give you two minutes.
Just in reference to that, I think this article is extremely vague. It doesn't say that a full-time person would be appointed. It could be somebody who, who is asked to work the same or fewer hours than I work. You know, this, it would be nice if there was more specificity to it as to what actually is going to happen if this gets passed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. We are at, pardon me, we're at Article twenty-one now. Ms. McGinnis?
Mr. Chair, a two-thirds majority amendment, approval of this will amend the zoning bylaws, Section twelve T, to permit an associate member to ask on-site plans.
Pretty basic, really.
I, I mean, I can go from, to insert.
No, 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 no.
Dot, dot, dot.
No, just in, in synopsis, really, what this does is, as I recall.
I have the article, so I don't have to say what.
Yeah. So correct me if I'm wrong, I just want to make it clear to the audience that, and make sure that we do this on Monday, is that there's an authority that currently an associate member does not have, and it would provide them the ability to review and approve site plans, if I remember properly. Is that right, Kathy?
You are. Yes, they can currently approve special permit applications which have a higher hurdle.
So why not also be able to do site plans?
Well, as I recall, the planning board requested this just for expediency in their reaching quorums in their meetings. We do have a question.
Ms. Harden, you may have to stand up and do jump.
I have a question about this, the part about the associate member. Our mass general laws, well, all right, let me just ask. Our mass general laws specify that an associate member of a planning board can be appointed when a planning board has been designated as a special permit granting authority. Now, going over our zoning laws, it looks to me as though site plans are only required when there's a special permit. So why is this needed? Because the, it's my understanding, the planning board doesn't look at site plans unless it's in connection with a special permit.
So I'm going to make a request of you, because to my knowledge, you're an attorney, and there are attorneys on this board, and these motions have been reviewed by attorneys. Could you kindly send me your question in writing, and I will have it answered by an attorney?
We already know what the answer is because you've already asked Town Council. I'm just saying, why, why add that? Because it makes it sound like there might be some case, sometimes when the planning board looks at a site plan separate from a special permit.
Mr. Chair?
And then the associate member could vote on that, but that's not the case.
Ms. Garza?
Well, within a special permit, there are individual site plans.
Right.
So I would assume, and I have not served on the planning board, but we do have a member here who has, when the planning board is meeting, they are approving site plans even though it is part of a special permit.
Right.
But if they are only voting on the site plan that night and they don't have a quorum, they're looking to have an associate member so that they can vote on that specific site plan.
But they can do that now. They, I'm, I'm just asking, it seems redundant, and it's leaves you open to being able to say, well, the associate member can vote on a site plan that has nothing to do with a special permit.
I assume this just makes it specific, like spells it out that associate members can also vote on site plans, even though site plans are part of the special permit.
Did something, was there an occasion when some developer said an associate member can't vote on this site plan?
So I'm going to go back to what I said before. Please send me your question in, in writing, and I will seek an answer.
You're not going to get another answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Article, Kathy, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Because you do have expertise in this area?
No, no, I'm, but there's other people with more expertise now that will talk to it if it needs to be on Monday for the planning board.
Okay. Article twenty-two.
Twenty-two, a two-third majority will allow amendment to Table two, area regulations, and Table three, heightened bulk regulations, and Section six of the town of Milis zoning bylaws to insert IP two district into the, IP two district to the IP column as written in the warrant, two-thirds majority. And twenty-two would be, this wants to be inserted, what needs to be inserted has been, was omitted in the printing of the tables of the zoning bylaws due to an oversight.
So there will be handouts at town meeting that will be printed a little clearer than the table that is in our booklet. It just got skewed during, you know, formatting glitch. Any questions on that? It's really an administrative change. It's, it was not much substantive to that particular item, but it has to be voted on? Okay. Number twenty-three, Mr. Borgman?
This article is for the town to vote and accept, authorize the consolidation of facilities management functions of the school committee with those of the town, provided that such consolidation only occur upon a majority vote of the school committee, if so accepted by the town meeting as well as the school committee.
Okay. Comments, questions? One of the topics that we'll cover briefly or in-depth, we'll see in Article III in the operating budget, is the consolidation or the transfer of some resources for efficiency's sake in order to have some of the town, the town facilities, some maintenance and janitorial services done by the school, because they have a wider capacity to do that, and it's felt that it's more efficient to do that. So this particular article allows, gives the authorization to do that. The funding transfer is actually covered in Article III in the operating budget. Okay. Article twenty-four?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Lor?
Article twenty-four is regarding unemployment insurance. This article is to transfer ten thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars from free cash for the unemployment insurance fund. Town follows the Mass State Guidelines for adequate coverage for any fiscal year twenty-three claims, and the financial committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you, sir. Article twenty-five, OPEB?
This article is to transfer available funds to fund the other post-employment benefits, also known as the OPEB fund. Finance Committee recommends to dismiss this article.
Okay. Twenty-six, Mr. Borgman? I'm sorry. Ms. Kabiebo?
You are voting to dismiss this or postpone it indefinitely?
So Ms. Kabiebo, the town moderator?
Yes, thank you.
Who is a Milis resident.
I'm so sorry.
We are dismissing it. It likely will come up in the fall.
Okay, so you're actually making a motion to dismiss?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
That's how it should read.
So to clarify, that was twenty-four, right?
Twenty-five.
That's twenty-five.
So it says postpone.
And then in here, it says dismiss.
One second for our town administrator to take a look. Can we just take a note to clarify? Thank you. Thank you. And good catch. Thank you.
Dismiss, postpone to dismiss?
Correct. Twenty-six, Mr. Borgman?
This article actually is slated to be postponed as well indefinitely.
Definitely not postponed.
Dismissed?
To dismiss.
To dismiss also, okay.
So same, same thing?
Same issue.
Yep.
Okay. Twenty-seven. So twenty-seven is the first of two citizens petition articles. Both of the articles, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, deal or are requested, they have sufficient signatures to, by Milis citizens to be included in the warrant. Each are regarding the establishment of a water, an elected water and sewer commission. One of the, the first article, number twenty-seven, is an amendment to the town of Milis Home Rule Charter, which is a document that would need to be changed in order for, and there is proposed, specific proposed language for the Home Rule Charter to be changed to, that, again, would establish an elected water and sewer commission of three persons, and resultingly, that authority and responsibility, which currently resides with the Select Board, would be removed. And then, I'll just go right to Article twenty-eight, because they're very, they're, they're tied together. They're, you know, Article twenty-eight is similar, the same purpose. It would make changes to the general bylaws for the town, each having the, essentially the same effect, but there is different language in each. There are changes to each document that would have to be made, and it would result, if adopted or if approved by voters, it would result in the town embarking on the process to have elected sewer, water and sewer commission, and removing that from the Select Board. There were, there would be future steps that would take place, but this would be step one. There was a very close vote and a lot of discussion on this over several weeks and, and months, and the Finance Committee voted on both of these articles, five to four, five votes to dismiss the Article four against. So the Finance Committee is recommending dismissal of both articles. There will be a minority report presented by the dissenting members of this committee, and there will be, I'm sure, much discussion on these articles at town meeting. So unless there's any questions or comments, Mr. Duffy?
Jim Duffy. Again, general comment, there's no detail here as to why the Finance Committee...
There will be, it's just not, there will be extensive discussion at town meeting. We generally don't get into the full discussion back and forth, which it will be at town meeting. There are pros and cons, which have been all, you know, there's, there's several public meetings that are on the webpage, videos, there's minutes, there's plenty of history on this that I don't need to...
Understood. Let me, let me voice it as a taxpayer who hasn't normally been involved with these things. This is what I get to go to the meeting with, and the details are not in here that allow me to have the background to make a decision, is really my basic point, right? So I understand there's all kinds of stuff out there, but this is what people get.
Sure.
So the details really should be here in the future, is my recommendation, so that everybody's got, you know, the details as to what's been going on, what the discussions have been, why are people voting to dismiss it or not approve it.
Okay. I would, I understand, I appreciate your feedback and, and that opinion. I would just tell you that this, this report is the roadmap, really your program for the town meeting, whether it be annual town meeting or fall town meeting, and that discussion takes place, the motion, the discussion that ensues takes place as is tradition and as is, you know, required for the town to vote. So if a thirty-nine million dollar operating budget doesn't get you to come out to vote, or a list of articles with brief, brief synopses, I can, I concede your point that more information could be provided. Typically, though, the background is provided at town meeting. And so, and the number one way for any resident of Milis to affect any of these things is to come out to those twice a year on the, on the calendar, first, you know, generally first week in May and the first week in November or the, you know, first ten days of November, is to come out and vote, and then if there's any special town meetings as well. is to come out and vote and then if there's any special town meetings as well. So, but I, I appreciate your comment. I wrote most of this in terms of the upfront comments by the, by the chairperson. The committee members wrote the synopses. They could be, they could be more. We are typically told for a variety of reasons to, the synopses are a couple of sentences long and they don't provide a full blow-by-blow history of how we got to our vote. I'll leave it at that.
I appreciate that and just to follow up. You could have links posted in here in terms of where to go find the things.
Yeah, excellent point.
On the website.
Yep. Excellent point.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Garzal.
Uh, I would like to point out that I believe it was last night here, there was a, a meeting of folks about these petition articles and I did see that Millis Community Media has those videos up. I mean, they're, they're long, but as I understand it, it was a good discussion last night. I wasn't able to attend, but I definitely recommend folks, you know, checking that out if they want to know more about the citizen petition articles. I'm sure there was a good discussion about it last night.
So, so Mr. Duffy and I were both here, as were Ms. McGinnis, Ms. Rosenfeld, I think Mr., Ms. Underhill was, there's a lot of people here and it's been discussed now multiple times during our finance committee sessions, which can be, are also on the Millis community. If you go to the website, there's quick links, there's the Millis Community webpage, Millis Community Media link, and then there's a button up top that says on demand and that's where you can find the videos of these unfortunate, fortunately, unfortunately, that's where you can find these videos of us up here carrying on. And so that's where you're going to get the best record of what was discussed, but all that to say, you have an excellent point in the part where we could put the links to those videos right here. If you want more discussion in how we got here, here it is, you know, type it in. So thank you very much.
They also have a YouTube channel.
Great, thanks. Mr. Stedman.
Mr. Chair, we're recommending this article be dismissed by simple majority. What happens just from my understanding? What happens if it does not pass to dismiss this?
Likely, so I'll let the moderator comment on this, but I'd ask that the moderator comment on this. If it does not pass to be dismissed, then there would be another motion likely to vote on it to get it to pass.
Correct. Which point, Article twenty-seventh does need a two-thirds majority to pass, whereas I believe Article twenty-eight? Or do I have that backwards?
No, you're correct.
Article twenty-eighth is a simple majority. So if they do not, if the dismissals do not happen, then yes, they will come in front of town meeting to be discussed, debated and voted on.
Okay. Thank you. Of course.
They're both for dismissal. Does the dismissal of the charter article have to be by two-thirds or just the majority?
No, no, no. The dismissals are all our majority votes, but if we end up entertaining a discussion of Article twenty-seven and we get a two-thirds majority to pass it.
So dismissal is majority?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Why?
You mentioned linkage between twenty-seven and twenty-eight. If twenty-seven is dismissed, does that automatically dismiss twenty-eight or?
No.
No.
Likely, but no, there's, they have to be taken up separately.
They do.
Yes.
But they should be approved jointly.
No question.
Okay. Just let it go on to the next level. Put that linkage in there.
The scenario of one was dismissed, but the other approved.
That, you know, you've heard the expression that democracy can be ugly. This is an example.
Yeah.
Messy, ugly, sorry. This is the sausage making in the process. Okay, so I'm going to close our pre-town meeting public hearing. I appreciate all of the questions. I afford you and ask you, Ms. Harden, if you have questions that didn't get answered, please send them to us and we'll endeavor to have an answer for you. But we appreciate the comments. Mr. Duffy, thank you. Okay. So for, so that concludes pre-town meeting. We're going to discuss some items, which you are welcome to stay, for review of the town meeting procedures. As you heard, town clerk's office asked me how we'd like to be seated. I answered that we're, we're, we're going to be up on the stage and we'll likely have a single table across instead of individual school desks like we've had in the last couple of them. It'd be great to have some normalcy. Procedure-wise, we will have, we'll, we'll decide who's going to do the seconds. It's not worth discussing in an open meeting in terms of who's going to second what article. It's just, it's mundane and we'll figure that out. That's something that we usually talk about prior to. Town meeting starts at seven-thirty. I would like for us to be in place, I think it's room one oh four. Typically, a bunch of us will show up in the lobby and then we go down, you come in the lobby of the high school and you hang a right right at the office and you go down the hall and it's, I think it's like one of the, the Spanish room, actually it does say one oh four here.
Yes.
So I would like us, for us to be there at six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
And that's kind of early. Deirdre, that's kind of early.
Well, I wasn't sure, but, um, it's entirely up to all of you. I posted it for six-thirty, but I think if Article ten has to be voted and I think, I believe there'll be another bill's payable to be approved, it's entirely up to you, Pete.
Article ten is the study, the CPC study. It may not even get voted.
That's on how effective I am tomorrow night.
Put the challenge down.
So would you like me to change it to seven?
Would you? Yes, please. In addition, the.
Sure, absolutely.
The, the Millis youth baseball, the Nationals team of eleven and twelve-year-olds is playing somebody on Monday night and so yours truly will be coaching first base and I want to make sure that I give it my all. Anyway, so we'll go with seven, Deirdre.
Okay, sounds good.
And if that doesn't work out, I take full responsibility. Okay?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Does anybody have?
You have to come in your uniform.
That's true.
Still a base.
Due to budget cuts, there is no uniform. Anyway, does anybody have any questions from the committee? Any questions on what's going to happen? I mean, it's, it's not so choreographed that we can't help each other and that we can't go off script a little. I guess the number one thing I would say is that you will read the motions verbatim and then the moderator, you know, you will ask to be acknowledged. So let me go through that real quick. That's probably about the most useful thing that we could do here. There'll be an introduction, a number of different introductions made and I think I will make a statement upfront, which will be very similar, but not identical to what's upfront in the booklet. Then the moderator will start the proceedings and we'll get into Article One. And when the moderator says Article One, if you're assigned Article One, you will say, Madam Moderator, and you will then be, likely be acknowledged. And once you're acknowledged.
Likely.
Could happen, you never know. You never know. It's her discretion, I'm not telling her what to do. When you're acknowledged, you will read, that's when you'll start the motion. I move that the town vote blah, 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 verbatim. She will synopsize the, the motion that you just made or somebody will second it and we will, we will clarify who will second. She will synopsize, she may read the entire thing, she may just go off extemporaneously and synopsize it. When she's done with that, she likely will say discussion. It's really similar to what we do here every time we, we have a vote. She'll say discussion. You will say, Madam Moderator. You will be acknowledged. You will be acknowledged. And at that point, you go through your discussion points and your discussion points really need to lay out the basis of why the committee voted the way it did. It's the, almost you're answering what Mr. Duffy asked. That's what you should be conveying to town meeting. When I say town meeting, I mean residents, your fellow voters. If there's any, it should be much more background than we covered tonight in most cases. And you can, you could, you could bring up a dissenting opinion. You can say that there was discussion along these lines, but the committee felt that, you know, based on our vote, we felt that something else was more compelling, whatever that is. You don't have to get into every single point, the point and counterpoint that was made in discussion, but it should be certainly the, the salient ones, the ones that were most important and impactful. You are, if somebody here is, feels very strongly about an article that they are not presenting and they want to make sure that the person presenting the article captures something that they felt strongly about, please have that exchange of information. And, you know, your, your wishes, you know, you, you guys need to work, those people need to work that out. And then, um, once the discussion's done, the moderator will then acknowledge everybody else that may stand up at the mic for whatever time period, whether it's two or three minutes each or whether it's fifteen minutes. I mean, you know, again, that's up to the moderator's discretion. In the, in the case of Articles twenty-six and twenty-seven, after, I'm sorry, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, after I make my discussion comments, I believe the moderator will, will say something to the effect that there's a, the finance committee will have a dissenting discussion points and will acknowledge the person, who I believe is Jody, to make those, to make those points. And then likely it would get opened up for floor discussion, which again, she is total discretion as to how, and she'll have the advice of town council. If there's a question, so this is worth noting as well, if there's a question during town meeting from the floor, if there's a, if there's any hint of it being a legal issue in almost all instances, in my limited experience of, you know, six, seven years, the moderator will defer to either town attorney or town administrator or somebody else. If it's a, a point of, if the, if it's a budget issue, it will typically come back to the committee or Mr. Kozinski or Ms. Johnston. You know, if you have something that you absolutely know the answer to, it's a, maybe it's a technical question or something along those lines, you know, you can get her attention, you can say, Madam Moderator, and she can defer to you, she can defer to Mr. McKay, she can defer to the Board of Health, she can defer to Mr. Kozinski, wherever she wants. If you really feel strongly that you have to be the one that answers the question, then by all means, try to get her attention and try to get her to recognize you. But you need to be recognized to speak and it's just, we need to help her control the audience by not, you know, I mean, anybody that went to the, the school town meetings or the marijuana town meetings, there's, there are contentious issues that people get excited over, for lack of a better word, I don't, there are people, people feel strongly, they're passionate and they feel strongly about issues and I know that this will be a town meeting just like that. I, I fully expect that and that's fine. So we will try to help her manage the meeting and keep it, you know, productive.
I do have one question of the moderator, if I might. Madam Moderator, can you explain to us how the move the motion language will be, especially on the citizens petitions? There's been discussion already about someone getting up right away and saying, move the motion. At one point, do you allow that and when there's still information ongoing?
In my experience here with, you're making, somebody making a motion to move the question, is that what you're asking me? Is that, that has to be voted on. So someone can make a motion to move the question, it then has to be voted on. If it doesn't pass, the discussion continues. Most people, most of my experience at town meeting has been that people do not make that motion until we've hit a point where perhaps a large number of people in the room are done with the discussion and frustrated. So it doesn't really fall to me, there are rules to be followed here. So if the discussion, if the town meeting wants to continue the discussion, they would make a motion, they would make a vote not to move the question.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, may I just for a moment?
Absolutely.
I, this is all about civil interaction. Okay, so that's where in managing this meeting, we want to make sure that people are heard, people are, are recognized, but that we have civil interaction. I would just ask again to make sure you're addressing things through me. That's the hardest part and sometimes I don't see because of how we're sitting and I'm also short. So I will not, I will not, I will not go out of, I will not be looking to ignore you, but if you feel I'm not hearing you, you need to make sure that I am. And I am looking to you guys for your expertise. You've brought this all together and are, you know, the people that have made a lot of the decisions here based on all kinds of information and you're a wealth of knowledge. So, you know, deferring to you is definitely a step in the process. So don't be shy if you can add clarification to the discussion. Thanks. Anything else?
No, I think we're, but maybe, maybe stay there for one second. So I believe we'll have two mobile mics, so that will be part of it. You have to be at a mic. So it'll be the person that is making the motion and discussion will definitely have one mic. The person that, likely what will happen, what makes sense, right, automatically is the person that had the motion last will be the one seconding because that, the way they could just keep, keep the mic and then when it comes to second, you can just say second. And really, that's not that big of a deal, it's not a, a huge role. Or you could just yell, second.
I'd just yell.
Yeah. We spent, we've spent time on, on this before. And then the other thing is that if you, as a committee member, want to be heard at town meeting and you're not being heard as part of the majority or as part of the dissenting, it is upon you to please go down from the stage and get in line. I did it last year. I forget what I commented on, it was on the, the charter changes.
The Board of Health issue too.
Yeah, I was outspoken last year. Sorry. Anyway.
Hope it's like a sped dip, it just kind of goes like up and goes down.
But you'll, you'll, you know, you'll get to the point where you start getting a little, you know, you have, you can't hold it any longer and you're not going to stay on stage because you're not speaking for the finance committee. So just go down and get in line and Pete Barubi, Eight Rose Road.
And I thank you for saying that, Mr. Chair, because that is important. When you're up there, you're speaking as the committee and for the committee. When you're down the floor, you're speaking as a private citizen and those roles should not be melded together. I mean, people will give you a certain amount of leeway because you're part of the committee, but if you're speaking your personal opinions, you should definitely be doing it from the floor. So, and that can easily be facilitated, so.
Okay. Unless there's any comments or questions, Ms. Garzal.
So one of the things that I do want to point out is that one of our highest duties at town meeting is to balance the budget. So if there are any motions that would make changes to the budget, it is upon us to make sure that we know how that budget is going to be balanced. So hopefully it doesn't come to that because it gets chaotic, but just to be aware, you know, that's in our policies and procedures, that's in our charter.
You're bringing your iPad?
I'm bringing my laptop. Because I don't trust sheets as much as I trust Excel. So if there are changes to, you know, number three, the way that the calculations are done for enterprise funds, any number of issues, what we vote on at town meeting has to balance. So I just want us to all be aware of that.
And Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kabiebo.
I'd also like to stress that although changes and amendments can easily be made or can often are made organically from the floor, if anybody in the audience tonight or in general is planning on and knows that they will be making an amendment, it would behoove them to get in touch with the clerk's office, make sure they understand the format. We would love it in writing ahead of time. It does not mean you have to do that, but if you prepare, it helps us to be prepared. It will make the meeting run smoother and if questions of funding come up, they will, people will be aware of having to think about those things so that we're not doing it on the fly at town meeting. So I think it's very important that everybody understand that and that it makes the town clerk's job easier and it makes my job much easier if we have those types of things in writing. Again, this does not mean that you have to do it, but if you're thinking about it and you want to make sure you're doing it right, I would highly suggest you follow those recommendations.
Yeah. Mr. Chair. So, and what we have. So, and what we have done in the past is when there have been motions to make changes to the budget, we have used those OPEB and stabilization articles to call those up for reconsideration, to move funds to those articles. So while we, our recommendation is for dismissal, we do still have those articles on the warrant so that we could set aside funds in those warrant articles at reconsideration if we needed to. So there are many ways to bake the cake, but that does allow us the leeway. Not that I'm suggesting that anyone make a motion to change the budget because of all the work that's been done on it, I'm just saying that is a mechanism by which we could do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to, thank you, Madam Moderator. We have a unpaid bill that we need to discuss.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Garzón.
I move that we approve a payment of $6,916 to our town publishing for the publishing of our Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the committee vote to approve the payment of $6,916 for our town publishing, for publishing of the town report. Discussion. None heard? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Motion passes eight to zero. I don't know. If everybody would just sign that?
I think the Select Board just wants to adjourn the meeting.
They have to wait till we're done. Mr. Underhill, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Jermaine, I'm sorry. Sure, I'm sorry.
Make sure we can... Appreciate that, we'd like to adjourn the Select Board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Those, motion carries, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Deirdre, could you tell us who the gentleman is on Zoom? Or if the gentleman can hear us, if he would just identify himself, which, if you, if you would like to, you don't have to.
Sure, I'd be happy to. My name is Yoris Friedman-Wills, we just moved to Frontier Lane. This is my first venture into town politics. I'm sure you'll meet me in person at town meeting.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Thanks for joining us. Okay. We're going to go right to minutes approval, so we have minutes from the 13th of April.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Garzón.
I move that we approve our minutes of April 13th as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the committee vote to approve minutes from April 13th as written. All those in, discussion. None? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. And I will take another motion.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Garzón.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.